Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Burlington City Council. Tonight is February 19, 2019. Burlington is now 126 years old. I'd like to take a moment to remind folks that we'd like to turn off all electronic devices, stuff, and other such. For tonight's invocation, we call on Mayor Proten, Cappy Hines.
It's our heads. Lord, thank you for bringing us to this new day and the surprise of brief sunshine when we had been expecting rain to be all day. The earth is saturated, but the sound of the tree frosts lets us know that all is well with the natural world. We are grateful for our city government and the many ways we work to help people find solutions to their problems. The employees of this city see this as a mission and take very seriously their responsibility. Bless them and their families, especially the family of Barry McCauley, one of our employees who passed away this week. Give us guidance as we ponder the complexities of our modern life together. Help us to keep our patience with each other so the level of discourse is healthy and productive. Help this council make decisions that benefit our populace so that people may prosper. Help us arrive at the peaceful and abundant life you have promised. Amen.
We have a special recognition this evening. At this time, I'll call on Recreation and Parks Director, Tony Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to honor one of our own. Steve Shaw has worked for us for the last 11 years and the last eight of them as the director of the Gifford McIntosh Park and Marina. Does a great job for us. That's a wonderful-looking facility, keeps it in very good condition, and it has our most popular walking hiking trail there that attracts a lot of people as well as the other amenities of that park. It's a combination of Gifford County and Burlington, City of Burlington project. We own most of the land there. They own a little bit of it, but we own most of it, and they pay the operational expenses. So Steve sort of has to tread the water between the City of Burlington and the supervisors there and also Gifford County and the officials he works with at Gifford County. So I want to call up Steve. He's been honored by the state of North Carolina, and I'm certainly happy to have him be recognized tonight. Steve? And Mr. Mayor, you have his plaque there if you want to present that to him.
Yes, and I think if council could join me in front for a vote.
Steve, why don't you tell me this is a non-sworn?
Non-sworn Park Ranger of the Year.
Right.
Yep, it was a big honor to be nominated and selected for this. It takes place, the Park Ranger Institute takes place at the North Carolina Justice Academy in the western part of our state. We're pretty lucky that this is the only Park Ranger Institute held in the country, and we're lucky to have it here in our state. Thank you to the City of Burlington for giving me the opportunity to attend this event each year. I've brought back a ton of knowledge, great ideas, built some good friendships there. I've never been disappointed with it. But once again, I thank you guys. I do encourage everybody in the room to get out there and enjoy your local parks. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Just one other quick comment. Steve is our highly late director, park ranger-type employee we've ever had recognized with this honor, so very proud of him. This time, we recognize our enormous city political diversity.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you that there are due to avoid conflicts and issues. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning the current agenda.
Done. Before council, our minutes from the January 14, 2019 work session, January 15, city council meeting, and February 5, city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes have been approved before council is the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make motion to adopt the agenda, Rick.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to approve a designation of applicants, agent resolution for the state of North Carolina and FEMA, designating the primary agent as Senior Accountant Brad Bullis and the secondary agent as Emergency Management Director Roger Romano for costs incurred during Hurricane Michael. Item B, to adopt a resolution amending the inter-local regional geographic information system agreement between the City of Burlington, City of Graham, and Town of Elon, extending the duration through fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Item C, to adopt a resolution approving the bid and authorizing execution of a contract between the City of Burlington and PDC Hardscapes, Inc., for the construction of the Graham-Hokdale Sidewalk Improvements Project. Item D, to reject all bids for the construction of the Arboretum Building at Willowbrook Park. Item E, to adopt a banking resolution for an account with American National Bank, authorizing the city manager, director of finance and risk management, and the accountant/treasury manager as signers on the account. And item F, to award a design-build contract for pre-construction services from North Park Pool Design to Miles McClellan Construction and approve budget amendment 2019-30 North Park Pool Project ordinance to receive and use grant funds awarded by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources to fund the expense. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda item?
Got a move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Consent agenda items have been approved. We have one item of unfinished business this evening. City council will consider an application to rezone from R15 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a 114-unit townhouse development. The properties are located on the north side of Garden Road between Wood Avenue and Boone Station Drive. Reference is Allenz County Parcel Identification Numbers 112-523 and 107226. The public hearing for this was held and closed on January 15, 2019. Consideration was continued from February 5, 2019, city council meeting. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to just review the rezoning request. It is to build 114 two-story townhomes on 18.4 acres with sidewalks and public streets built to city standards, just like most neighborhoods in the city. It's going to have public water and sewer, two parking spaces per unit, roundabout for traffic calming, and connections to the existing street networks which will give the potential for improved emergency services, not just in that development, but to everything along that street and in the area. And I'm sorry, I'm still getting over my sinus infection. The comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial in the area, and this is a good mix of residential already, including multifamily, commercial, and O&amp;I. And the conceptual plan has been approved by the Technical Review Committee. Staff has recommended approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of five to two. The request was continued from the January 15 and February 5 council meetings, and in your agenda package, you have the updated ordinance that reflects the changes that have been made to the application. Based on council input, staff and the developer discussed ways to better protect the surrounding properties to include landscaping, building height, and architectural embellishments. Mr. Lazo is here. If you have any questions, particular to him, here you can see this, the area of the rezoning request. Here you can see a drawing of the proposed layout of the site plan. Here is the roundabout that they have proposed to help connect up. Collin Wood will extend to garden, and as I said before, that will help improve emergency services access in the entire area. If you have a road that's blocked over here, there may be access in a different location just shifting the emergency services calls to whichever direction is necessary. It's always good to have multiple points in that kind of a situation. Here you can see a larger view of the zoning in the area, and you can see the wide variety of housing opportunities as well as commercial, retail, restaurants that are in this area. It's a very, very good mixed-use area. This would just add to the housing mix that's available in the area. Here's an aerial photo with the subject properties delineated here, and I would like to show you color rendering here. Excuse me. He has, the developer has added to the landscaping. This was already in the works, but he's beefing this up with evergreens to try and increase the visual barrier that will be a nice buffer between the single-family homes and the townhomes here. There is also an increase that has been made here to the north. This is staying the same over in the northeast section because this is a wetland area, and you don't want to risk upsetting that balance. It could kill the trees that are planted or damage what's already existing native in that area. We also have an increase in vegetation. There's a Duke Energy easement here, and we've, he has increased the landscaping in this area as well. I think with the rendering, it gives you a better idea of how it would look in reality. It looks a little nicer, a little more pleasing to the eye to have the green included in there so you can see it easier than the black-and-white drawing. Let's see. I'm trying to make sure I went over everything for you. I'm going to show you the building height. Joy Lee, our zoning administrator, has made a drawing for you to give you an idea. He wanted me to tell you that, of course, these are the parents and children, and that there is a dog inside the house. I'm not sure what happened while I was out sick, but I'm going to try not to do that again. Anyway, it's a height of 40 feet, measured from the front here, and it goes to halfway between the eve and the roof peak, and that's the mean elevation there. Ordinarily, this such a development would be 50 feet, but the developer has scaled that back. Let's see. I also have some elevations here for you to look at, and these are just ones that Mr. Lazo has given us as possibilities for what this may look like. It's not necessarily they'll be exactly like these, but they will be two-story and have a garage, so this will give you some idea of what you might be able to expect. These are probably better. And again, for that, that elevation's going to be right here. Some of the exact wording for the additional concessions that Mr. Lazo has agreed to, additional landscaping along the western and northern property lines that will include evergreen plantings to provide a substantially opaque buffer, building height will be reduced from 50 feet to 40 feet, townhomes will be a minimum of 1,200 square feet, and at least 40% of the units will contain some brick, stone, or masonry on the front facade.
So also a limitation on the number of units per unit structure? I think it was limited to six, whereas it can be up to 10.
We usually have six. Yeah, that's what we're proposing for the UDO as well.
Any council questions regarding all that Ms. Nelson has mentioned? We've got a lot of additional conditions put on this. Any questions for the developer? Council's been provided with a set of motions suggesting either approval or denial of the property listed on your green sheet. Do I hear a motion from council?
No, I would, I looked at this project in great detail. I'm either on Boone Station, Garden Road, or St. Mark's Church Road virtually every day. That's my corridor, that's where I travel. And I had some concerns about this project initially, mainly because of the traffic. I mean, you've got elements crossing nearby, several apartments in that area, obviously. You've got the St. Mark's Church traffic and activity there, so I had a lot of questions and concerns. I spent some time with Mike, Nun, and Nolan, and we talked about that. And I got reasonably comfortable that all of those concerns I had were going to be taken care of, certainly with some of the development improvements that's there. Collin Wood is cut through. It's going to be, if this project is approved, but it is now, so I know that from personal use. Lots of development changes going on. St. Mark's Church Road is obviously going to be changed in the process of being changed right now, so that's going to improve the area. And one of my main concerns was the residents on Quidditch and how always there was going to be something that would back up to them, houses or whatever. There was, you know, this calls for, I think, 16 units on that area there, so buffering and height is really important to me, and I think that's been addressed pretty good. And then the density of the, there's been a lot of conversation about density of this project, and I think there's two points worth noting. One is the modernization of our UDO increases our exposure to density anyway, once adopted. That's a fact. A lot of developments that we've looked at in the past, and once we're going to become enough, can be more densely populated. Once this UDO is in effect, it's just a change of, it's a societal change, and it's something that we've had to learn and get educated on and adopt it. And the other thing about this project, about 90% of it is interior, so a lot of the density is its own being in and of itself. Lots of talks about cars parked on the street and so forth. I think some of the parking requirements I saw, I believe, 336 spaces, is that correct?
Thanks.
So a lot of parking in there, but cars on the street in the neighborhood are only going to really affect those that live in that neighborhood. The roundabout on Collin Wood, I'm a big fan of. Roundabout's controlling traffic in wonderful ways. I think we designed this, city staff, the developer. It's really good for the project. And then lastly, you know, we're looking at lots of affordable housing solutions. The mayor in one of our recent work sessions talked about some of the plight of Chapel Hillism, and if we don't consistently try to stay ahead of that game, then we're going to be no better off than they are. I think, what was the dollar amount they had?
10 million dollars.
10 million they put in to sort of help stimulate that. So based on that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that we rezoned from R15 Residential District to Conditional Residential District for the use of 114 units. The properties are located on the north side of Garden Road between Quidd Avenue and Boone Station Drive. That's referenced in the tax parcel. Identification numbers 112-523 and 107-226. And this motion's based upon consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in Section 4, identified as land use, of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have residential and commercial, as was previously stated. Single-family townhome developments are permitted residential use through zoning, the development incorporates requirements identified in both our Greenways Plan and the Bike Ways Plan, Map 3.4A, Comprehensive Network Northwest Burlington, and the Pedestrian Master Plan Map 3.4. Pedestrian Network Recommendation Map Southwest Grid. All that's complicated, but I'm sure everybody knows what that is on the city side. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that connection will be provided to the existing public streets incorporating roundabout as both a traffic calming measure and a potential reduction in cut-through traffic. The requested density is comparable to other developments in the area. Landscaping adjacent to some of the abutting properties will be denser than otherwise required, and this amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area. Did I get that right?
Perfect.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Yes, before you take a vote, I need to speak against this motion. I hear all of the things that Jim pointed out, and I do recognize how well-done this has been in terms of negotiation around the project. But what I can't get over is that the area that is right next to this and behind it is all residential. And I think we have to take this in the context of other things that we've approved in this area. We've just built 200, we have not, but developers have built 288 apartments down the road. We know this is a congested area, and it just seems to me that we're pushing the density too far. And I don't feel that it's, even though it is not that many difference, if you, I think it would be fair if it were R9, which would allow 80-some houses in that area. But when you add another 30, something close to that, then you're adding 30 to 60 more cars coming out onto Garden Road. And that, both of those intersections at both ends are very, very high usage, especially the one at Garden Road in Houghland Mill Road, was noted to be one of the top 50 intersections for traffic count in the Triad, which I thought was quite stunning. And for us to add more to that just doesn't seem reasonable, so I just need to make my case there.
Mayor, if we could, I want to, just to follow up on what Mr. Hines said, and I've been out there several times, I went out there twice today, and had the same concern, maybe the density was a little less. The question that, it kept coming back to me, will it be developed? You know, I guess it could be developed for a single-family detached, and if you want from, you know, R6 to R9 density, maybe. You know, I guess the question is still, I don't know, we've got a vote here momentarily, but anyway, the density is what it is, and it's one thing, and I read through the material that you provided, Mayor, is that one thing that we as a local government, about the only thing, we don't do vouchers, you know, land use is one of these things that we can do as far as providing housing, but even then, you know, in my own personal notion is, you know, can we get too saturated with one thing? That would be my concern, so. But anyway, you know, having said that, I think, I think the density is a little, you know, is a little too heavy for me as well, so that's where I am. And it's no question about it, the traffic is heavy out there, and whether over time it can be accommodated, but it's very heavy, so.
Any other council questions or comments regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion proposed to approve the zoning change, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion is passed, 3-2. Thank you very much. Thank you, Amy. Next on our agenda, item two, public hearing. It's been set for this evening. City council will consider an application to rezone from O&amp;I Office and Industrial Institutional District to B1 Neighborhood Business District. The property is located at 1105 South Church Street. Reference is Allenz County Parcel Identification Numbers 112-523 and 107-226. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. Also, before I get into this, just want you to know, anytime you're going through tonight, or anytime in the future you're going through, I know that the consistency statements are different now, they're longer and more complex. If you have any questions, staff's here to help. 1105 South Church Street is a request to, as you said, Mayor, to rezone from O&amp;I Office and Institutional to B1 Neighborhood Business District. This is a request for a straight rezoning, so I will call to your attention, all potential uses must be considered. We have a listing of those highlighted in your agenda packets that show the uses and those that are different from the current O&amp;I. While other uses will be allowed, keep in mind that the building itself is small, as is the parking area, so that will restrict a lot of the uses that could potentially otherwise go in that location. They will be unable to meet their parking requirements and other issues. B1 is compatible with O&amp;I in that both, excuse me, both single-family residential is allowed in both of those zoning areas. There is some overlap in other uses as well, both O&amp;I and B2, which are in the area, if you can see here that who is O&amp;I and the sort of registered color is B2. They allow commercial uses, and B1 is in between those two uses, kind of a little bridge, if you will. So as far as impact goes, that gives you some idea there. The comprehensive plan recommends neighborhood commercial uses in this area, as well as multiple other areas throughout the city, in little neighborhood cores, to try to give residents access to services that at least there's hope that they could just walk to and not have to use a car. If they do use their car, they don't have to drive as far, so it helps out with their time, as well as with any pollutants added by vehicles in the, on the roads. Staff has recommended approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend this to council unanimously. And for us, the consistency statement, the first option is the one that was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was in the format that you see here. The initial statement of each option gives a factual reasoning that council can use to support their positions. The second statement in each option lists why the request is considered to be reasonable and in the public interest, and with all the consistency statements, staff has conducted a review of adopted or approved plans for support of the various positions that are shown. Council is encouraged to use their own statements in place of or to supplement what staff has given them.
Any questions regarding this from council?
This is, this is a straight rezoning.
It is.
I'm going to resist the temptation to ask, you know, what's going to be that? You get so used to conditional west.
Right.
I'm just, I don't know why I'm unusually curious about this one, but anyway, I know the rule.
All right. Any other questions from council before we begin the public hearing?
I just wanted to make sure that under the B1 Neighborhood Business, automobile parking lots are allowed, but that's not sales lots, correct? You could not have an automobile sales lot on that property. You could?
If it is.
Wait, I'm getting, yes.
You could, you, I'm sorry. My throat is going. You, it's such a small area and such a small lot, they don't believe that would fit.
Parking lot is a use, but all the sales you cannot.
It's not a use.
Only, only the parking lot is a use, can I say? So the building could be torn down and used as parking lot, but you cannot sell it. Pick up what you're asking.
We have a problem with car sales.
Sales, not a, sales lots.
Any other questions from council?
Joy, can we sell compact cars?
Motorcycle, huh?
Yeah.
All right, this is the public hearing, if anyone on this side of the row would like to speak.
I'm the owner of the property, and that's.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, we got folks watching at home, so.
I'm private. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. I'm the owner of the property. The intention is to keep it as an insurance agency at this point, it's Peckman Private Insurance. My wish is that my daughter is opening a esthetician shop, which is skincare, which is along the lines of beautician, that kind of thing, and I have enough.
You could, you, I'm sorry. My throat is going. You, it's such a small area, and such a small lot, they don't believe that would fit.
Parking lot is a use, but automobile sales you cannot.
It's not a use.
Automobile parking lot is a use, cannot be sold. So the building could be torn down and used as parking lot, but you cannot sell automobile. Pick up what you're asking.
He has a problem with car sales.
Sales, not a problem with sales lots.
Any other questions from council?
Joy, can we sell compact cars?
Motorcycle, huh?
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak.
I'm the owner of the property, and I should.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, we have folks watching at home.
I'm the private, thank you guys for being here tonight. I'm the owner of the property. The intention is to keep it as an insurance agency at this point, it's Pecan Private Insurance. My wish is that my daughter is opening an esthetician shop with skincare, which is along the lines of beautician, that kind of thing. And I have enough room to do that there. So there'd be minimal parking required, because it's a small area that she would take up. So hopefully that might answer your questions.
Can you just state your home address for public record?
2231 West Front Street, Burlington.
Thank you.
Appreciate you answering the question I couldn't ask.
Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
No move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing on this item is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this? I will mention, staff has presented motions to approve and deny per their template on the blue sheet. This was included in the detailed agenda packet.
Amy, can I just ask you a question? The Neighborhood Business District. Give me an example where that zoning is now.
Rollins Street.
Any other council questions regarding the motion?
Well, I make a motion to approve the request. Let me make sure I read this in correctly. Hopefully, the city council believes this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and moves to approve, a move to approve the request for rezoning O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to B1 Neighborhood Business District. Property is located at 1105 South Church Street, references Alamo County Tax Parcel, ID number 125383. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential and neighborhood commercial uses. The request is in area, is in an area with B2, O&amp;I, and R-9 zoning. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive master plan calls for neighborhood commercial uses in this area, and the amendment is compatible with the existing zoning in the area.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? Attorney, was that motion properly stated?
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion to approve this rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, it's five. Thank you very much, appreciate you being here. Next on our agenda, we have a new business item. City Council will consider temporary closing Front Street from, from Spring Street to Worth Street during the Burlington Junior Women's Club Annual 5K Fundraiser on Saturday, April 6, 2019, from 6:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m., conditional upon meeting all requirements of the City of Burlington's special event permit application. At this time, we recognize Kara McCollum with the Burlington Junior Women's Club. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you all for having us tonight. Just here to ask for the council's support for this road closure for our annual fundraiser. This fundraiser does support our volunteer activities throughout our club calendar year, and donation will be made to the Alamo's charitable fund, the Pink Ribbon Fund this year.
Any questions from council regarding this? I'll take a motion.
We approve the request.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much, we look forward to your event. Item four on our agenda, city council will consider the following request during the March 16, 2019, B-Town Events Fourth Annual St. Patty's Day Bash and Parade. Item A is to temporarily close the following streets for the designated times, which are spelled out in your agenda. At this time, we recognize Recreation Supervisor, Special Events Coordinator, Emily Crowe. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me here tonight to ask for the street closures for our fourth annual St. Patty's Day Bash. Personally, it's a favorite event of mine, it was my first event here at the city, and it was also in its inaugural year. So it's our newest event, and I think it's really become a Burlington tradition that folks look forward to. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions from council? This is one of our larger events, isn't it?
It is. It really has grown and grown each year, and thankfully, we've had good weather, which we will also have again in 2019.
Do I hear a motion from council to approve these street closures?
No move.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. We have a second part to this request, which is to, request to extend business premises for the Rusted Bucket Tavern to host a Beer Garden on March 16, 2019, during the B-Town Events Fourth Annual St. Patty's Day Bash and Parade. Approval is contingent upon meeting all insurance requirements. At this time, we recognize Rusted Bucket Tavern Owner, Angie Ball. Welcome back.
Good evening, y'all. Whoa, a little short. I'm here again this year to ask for street closures for the Beer Garden to collide with the Parks and Ranks St. Patty's Day Event, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Angie?
Come on, at least one.
Will there be green beer?
There will, definitely be green beer.
Do I hear a motion regarding this request?
I make a motion to approve the request, assuming that all insurance requirements are met.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Angie, Emily, thank you very much. We look forward to that event, and we'll keep our fingers crossed about weather. That concludes our regular agenda items. We have two folks who have signed up for public comment. First, I'll call on Jose Alguera. Should be able to pronounce your last name better, I'm sorry, Jose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jose Alguera from 717 Ask You Street in Burlington. And I just wanted to say thank you for being part of signing that letter, along with the other members from Asheville, Durham, and so forth, in recognition to everything that has been going on. With that said, the spike of what's been going on with the ice, as an employer, I lost quite a bit of production for this past weekend, with all the ice rumors that were going on, and employees taking the day off on Friday, and undocumented and non-documented and documented supporters of them taking off on Saturday. Three of my facilities that I manage took a hit with production, which we had to produce quite a bit of on Sunday, and yesterday, and today, some of them working up to 10 hours a day. But I just wanted to say thank you for supporting that letter, and I hope that somehow, somewhere, our government will find a solution for these broken immigration status that we have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Next on public comment, I have Josh Trul. Welcome.
I know we had a little meeting over the week. I just was informed that they're going to have another thing Saturday from 5 to 11. Of course, the noise was obnoxiously loud, Chief Smite was there, he still allowed it to happen. We was, when we had the meeting, we was told that we wouldn't have this problem, and we still had the problem. I have a couple Hispanic people that would like to come in and talk, but they don't speak good English. If there's some way we can get this on the agenda to talk about letting people come in and talk to, I just think that it's messed up.
I appreciate that.
I'm the owner, I purchased this home seven years ago, and it's continually getting worse. And I mean, I worked on a service business, I run plumbing service business. I might work till 4:00, and then get off at 6:00, and then go back in at 9:00 and work till 3:00 in the morning, and then sleep throughout the day and get woke up. Or I might be working all day and come home and be exhausted. I mean, there's been times, for instance, I worked 22 hours and come home from changing a water heater, so to say, like it mellow mushroom, and try to get some sleep on a Friday evening, and I didn't get no sleep all weekend long. All the kids talk about it at the bus stop, how they ain't been able to concentrate and do their stuff during the week because of the music, getting their homework done. I just think that, you know, we just need some more communication and getting something done about it.
Just for folks' reference, Josh was talking about National Agents Alliance and some of the noise concerns that we've had. Chief, would you mind commenting? So action has been taken regarding what happened on Friday. Chief can provide a little more information.
Yes, sir, Mayor, council, I think you're all loosely aware, just for the public's general knowledge, you know, it's a difficult situation, working to balance the rights of businesses and homeowners in conflicting space, and we're doing our best, we'll continue to meet moving forward. I spoke with one of the executives there during the event on Saturday night, he said, well, you've seen our plans. I said, no, actually, I haven't, so we're looking forward to an opportunity to see what plans they've made. They brought in a sound engineer who was there for some sound checks on Saturday. We had some understanding, we listened to what was kind of canned music, and by Saturday night, when it was the live band, it was substantially different. We worked to mitigate that throughout the event. We clearly didn't meet his level of satisfaction, but I'm confident that we made an impact on what was going on there, and I feel like we're moving in the right direction. There's just not a quick solution, and that's unfortunate, but we're working very diligently, and I'm optimistic that National Agents Alliance will make some physical plant and structural changes in the near future that will positively impact this. And if they don't, then we're going to continue to use the legislative and legal options available to us to curtail their actions and positively impact the neighborhood.
Well, it's not just me, just so we all know, and they never did, and he stood out there for an hour with us, and did not go over there and ask him to turn it down, just so everybody knows.
Thank you, Josh. That concludes our folks who have signed up for public comment. Do I hear any city council comments? I will mention, we.
Yeah, if I could, I did visit the site Saturday night about 8:30, 4:00 to 9:00. I think I seen you in the car, the rideshare. I was standing outside, I would have, but nine, they kind of knew you. You know, it's, I'm embarrassed to say, actually, it was a meeting held with some of the neighbors last Thursday night, Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And the mayor and I was there, and I'm not trying to get too far ahead of any kind of ordinance here, but this thing is complicated in the sense of determining what exactly, in terms of decimals or sound, that we allow. And I think what makes it so much more difficult is, and this is one particular situation, but when you start setting the ordinance, it impacts, impacts throughout the community, throughout the city. So I think Mr. Huffman is certainly doing some work with a couple larger municipalities who's dealt with this in the past. And when I was there Saturday night, it was probably about, eh, 4:00 to 9:00, back in the cul-de-sac, back in this neighborhood, you could hear the bass, obviously, back there. I mean, that's what I heard, I didn't hear any, you know, you could, just the bass, that constant pounding or type thing. So I do believe that it's really important, first of all, with the, with the company, to try to find some, something to mediate some of this, but also, I think it's important for us to come to grips with what we're asking the company to do, in terms of the ordinance we set forth, because not only will it be impacting them, but, I mean, let's be honest, we're very fortunate, we're not fortunate now, we hope to have more development downtown. We're going to have parties in two weeks downtown, three weeks downtown. So this is just not one isolated situation going forward. It's a little bit more complicated than that. So I believe that's what will take some time, I mean, to try to get it right. And Mr. Huffman, I'm going to let you speak to this now, but you're in the spot, because I think it will take some time here.
Clearly, and we are, and the office is taking a look at numerous ordinances that are in place around the state, and as soon as we have an opportunity to pass some of those by y'all, and let you see what you think, and Chief Smite thinks preliminarily about those, we're going to go make contact with these organizations, with these other cities, to see how, how it works when the rubber hits the road, how is it they go about, and what sort of success they have had in implementing these when they, when they go to court with them, if they've had to write citations or escalated penalties over a period of time. But it will take some period of time to pull this together.
May I say one more thing? When the guy, the one of the officers come to the home, he went over there and told, this is not this actual time, but the previous time, and went over there and told the gentleman to turn it down, or he's on a site, and the gentleman said to the officer, and the officer come back to my home and said, we're willing to be on a prepaid basis if that's okay with you. So, I mean, I'm not asking for, you know, I live a block away from this place, and my wife works 10 hours a day in Chapel Hill, and I, my house backs up to Maple Avenue, and they're on Turnpike Street, okay? And my wife is also trying to get a law degree, she's on her last year, and she comes home and works till 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the night, we leave at 4:30 in the morning, because she drops me off at work, and then she goes to work. I just, I'm just asking for some type of reprieve until something's happened. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, I think staff has mentioned, we're working diligently on this, it's not a quick fix to implement a new ordinance that has to, so we want to make sure we do our homework on that. I do appreciate you coming, and I think staff will be continually in contact with you, Josh, so we appreciate your continued diligence on helping us find a resolution for this. Any other council comments this evening? There's a couple events I want to mention real quick. We are waiving our bulk waste collection fees starting March 5th to help folks out with spring cleaning around the city, so you can bring stuff to the curbs and we'll help pick it up. We are running our first-ever Spanish-language police community academy, starting February 26th. Applications are still open, the entire program will be in Spanish. So for citizens in the community who may be bilingual or not speak English quite as well, this is a wonderful opportunity to learn more about what happens in our police department. Our fire academy is also still taking applications for their next academy, which begins in March. Both these are wonderful ways to learn all about how our first responders operate in the City of Burlington, and how our citizens can help work with them to help improve quality of service in the city. Belonging Burlington, our next session is happening March 27th, right here in City Hall, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. We are welcoming everyone, whether you're a new resident, whether you're an old resident, this is a wonderful opportunity to fall in love with our wonderful city, especially a city that is founded on Valentine's Day. What better way to fall in love? And as you heard in some of our motions this evening, St. Patty's Day, our Bash and Parade is happening March 16th, this Fourth Annual Event. Wonderful opportunity to get down, celebrate, there are family-friendly events as well, so we look forward to seeing lots of folks downtown. Any other council comments? Do I strike here a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you everyone for coming tonight.